Good evening, everybody. And welcome to our almost virtual town council meeting. As you can see, I'm up here on the dais by myself. And our eight council persons are joining by phone. The next council meeting will be entirely virtual. But we thought we would start here tonight to make sure that we had the technology in place. So thank you all for joining. So adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act, was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of the town council on December 11th, 2019. The notice was, on that date, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader and the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. Mrs. Rowley, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Brindle?
Here.
Council members have a good?
Here.
Palmerly?
Here.
LaGrippo?
Here.
Katz?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Contract?
Here.
Dartia?
Here.
Boys? Councilman Boys?
I believe he's muted.
Oh.
Jim Boyes is here on. Are you still on?
Councilman Boyes is there, but he appears to be muted. If he can unmute it, that'd be great.
Yeah, Jim, you're muted. Are you still on?
That was him. Okay.
Councilman Boyes is there, but he appears to be muted. Can I unmute?
Okay.
Okay. So bear with us. We'll get there. And normally, this is a time when we have an invocation, which is given by one of the council persons. But in lieu of that, actually, I'm going to stay seated and really provide a reflection that I've -- a good friend of mine just passed on to me, that as we contemplate the times that we're in, and as difficult as they are, we always try to see, you know, if there's some larger purpose and benefit ultimately from what we're going through. So I tend to be a very strong believer that there is a spiritual purpose or larger lesson to be learned by everything that happens to us in life, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing. And so I've been thinking a lot about, and I'm sure many of us have, what we are going to be able to learn out of this experience. So someone sent me this message from Bill Gates, and that I guess he wrote today, and it really encapsulated a lot of things I've been thinking about. So I thought I would share this with all of us tonight. What is the coronavirus really teaching us? It is reminding us that we are all equal, regardless of our culture, religion, occupation, financial situation, or how famous we are. This disease treats us all equally. Perhaps we should too. If you don't believe me, just ask Tom Hanks. It is reminding us that we are all connected, and something that affects one person has an effect on the other. It is reminding us that the false borders that we have put up have little value, as this virus does not need a passport. It is reminding us, by oppressing us for a short time, of those in this world whose whole life is spent in oppression. It is reminding us of how precious our health is, and how we have moved to neglect it through eating nutrient-poor manufactured food and drinking water that is contained with chemicals upon chemicals. If we don't look after our health, we will, of course, get sick. It is reminding us of the shortness of life and of what is most important for us to do, which is to help each other, especially those who are old or sick. Our purpose is not to buy toilet paper. It is reminding us how materialistic our society has become, and how when, in times of difficulty, we remember that it's the essentials that we need: food, water, medicine, as opposed to the luxuries that we sometimes unnecessarily give value to. It is reminding us of how important our family and home life is, and how much we have neglected this. It is forcing us back into our houses, so we can rebuild them into our home and to strengthen our family unit. It is reminding us that our true work is not our job; that is what we do, not what we were created to do. Our true work is to look after each other, to protect each other, and to be of benefit to one another. It is reminding us to keep our egos in check. It is reminding us that no matter how great we think we are, or how great others think we are, a virus can bring our world to a standstill. It's reminding us that the power of free will is in our hands. We can choose to cooperate and help each other, to share, to give, to help, and to support each other, or we can choose to be selfish, to hoard, to look after only ourselves. Indeed, it is difficulties that bring out our true colors. It's reminding us that we can be patient, or we can panic. We can either understand that this type of situation has happened many times before in history, and it too will pass, or we can panic and see it as at the end of the world, and consequently cause ourselves more harm than good. It is reminding us that this can either be an end or a new beginning. This can be a time of reflection and understanding, where we learn from our mistakes, or it can be the start of a cycle which will continue until we finally learn the lesson we are meant to. It is reminding us that this earth is sick. It is reminding us that we need to look at the rate of deforestation just as urgently as we look at the speed at which toilet papers and rolls are disappearing off of our shelves. We are sick because our home is sick. It is reminding us that after every difficulty, there is always ease. Life is cyclical, and this is just a phase in this great cycle. We do not need to panic; this too shall pass. This pandemic is sent to remind us of the important lessons that we seem to have forgotten, and it is up to us if we learn them or not. And I hope we do, and I'm confident we will. With that, if our council members could unmute their phone, and I'm going to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America, to the republic for which we stand, to the Constitution of America.
With that, I'm actually going to ask Jim to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of updates for the public. First, got a lot of questions that have been coming in about budgets and tax payments and so forth. Just an FYI, as of today, we received word from the state that the Assembly will be meeting tomorrow to consider a bill which will allow permit extensions of certain deadlines for municipal budgets, which we've already decided not to introduce our budget tonight, as well as discretion to extend deadlines under local budget law and municipal land use law. This is for planning board and board of adjustment applications that are under timeframes. In addition, this bill, if it is adopted in the form it's in right now, will give the Director of Local Government Services to allow municipalities to institute extended grace periods for property tax payments, with the date specified by the state, not the town. And it also authorized the Director of the Division of Government Services to extend the date in which payments of taxes are due to the county, school district, and special districts. So more to come on this, but the state's looking at this, and they'll give every town, including ours, direction of what we can and cannot do. So more to come on that. Also, tonight on the agenda, I wanted to give a pre-information about the ordinance that's being introduced tonight. It's an amendment to our road moratorium ordinance we passed last year. The amendment tonight does a couple of things. It provides for some increased fees for road opening permits, most of which are done by utilities. It also increases the road moratorium number of years from five to seven, further protecting the roads. It also requires full road repaving for roads under moratorium when there's major cuts in the road, most of that by utility companies. And it also relieves some of the requirements of ADA-compliant ramps and sewerheads for those to be done by the town, which we want to do. We want to comply properly, and we did that last year, and it worked out very well. And so these are other amendments to the ordinance, so that we can actually further preserve our roads. And when they have to be cut into for various items, they'll be repaved in full or in part, which I think is a good thing. And that's being done now, so that we have -- if we're able to have a road paving program this year, we'll have that in place by that time. One other thing I want to mention, I know the mayor will mention a few things in her comments tonight, just how great the employers are doing for the town. You've seen our police chief, you've seen our health officer, who you'll see very shortly, our fire departments and public works departments out there. But the gears of government continue to work with the employees, who are now really only skeletal staffs, if any, some days in the office. But the government continues to move on. One of those departments I want to mention is the recreation department. If you haven't been involved in the recreation department or haven't seen them, please go to their Facebook page. They've started a virtual recreation department as of last week, and they're doing a phenomenal job. As a matter of fact, so good that they just learned before the meeting that the National Recreation and Parks Association actually recognized their Chalk the Walk program from last weekend. They were mentioned in a publication that went nationwide. And Heather, Lauren, Don, Joanne, Linda are doing a great job there. So it's another way that we're trying to use social media to entertain and to engage the public while we're going through this crisis here. So again, it's just another shout-out to some of the employees here. So with that, Mayor, Megan, next?
Yep, I think so. So go ahead. So we have our regional health director, Megan Avalone, who has been unbelievably busy, as you can imagine, over the last few weeks, and has not gotten very much sleep. So is that working, microphone? Yeah, so Megan is here to just give us an update.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. So as many of you know, unfortunately, this week, we had our first COVID-19 fatality in Westfield. It was a 91-year-old resident with several comorbidities. This is truly a heartbreaking reminder of why it's so important that we really do our best to be compliant with the guidance that we're hearing everywhere. Social distance ourselves, stay home when you're sick; that includes not going to any stores when you don't feel well, and washing your hands frequently. The number of cases that we're seeing in New Jersey is rising quickly, and community spread is ongoing. The people who are most likely to develop serious illness include people who are 65 and older, people who live in a nursing home or a long-term care facility, people of any age that have heart disease, diabetes, or lung disease, especially if these conditions are not controlled. This week, though, there was some good news also. Union County opened up their first drive-through testing site, and that testing site is located at Kane University's Union Campus. The testing site is available by appointment only, and your health care provider must preregister you and provide a prescription for testing. There's also now a self-assessment tool on the New Jersey Department of Health website. That website, though, is self.covid19 nj.gov. And we'll have these links available later on as well. And now, there's also a second public call center for general public-related COVID-19 inquiries. So that's 211. So there's the regular nj.gov hotline that they had, but now residents can also call 211, certainly easier to remember, for COVID-19-related activities. And we can also text. So residents can text NJCOVID to 898-211 to stay informed via text message for any updates that are happening statewide.
Can I ask a question about the 211? I get actually probably a couple of emails a day from folks who are feeling symptomatic and wanting to know what they need to do to get testing. I obviously refer them to their primary care physician. What service does the 211 provide? Is that the type of call that should be directed there?
They are not providing guidance on who can be tested and who cannot be tested. That is a provider-based decision still at this time, but they certainly can provide information on hours of operation for testing sites, what testing sites are open. You know, we have two FEMA testing sites in New Jersey now, one in Homedale and one in Bergen County. So general non-clinical inquiries are certainly appropriate for 211.
Got it. And generally, that's still the guidance. If someone needs to test, they have to go through their primary care physician, right?
Correct. Even though testing is opening up in New Jersey, it's still not opening to the point where anybody who wants to test can get a test. There's certainly still specific requirements. So you have to be symptomatic, and you have to be referred via a prescription from your health care provider.
Great. Thank you, Megan, so much. I would say, no questions from anybody here, but thank you. And I think it goes without saying, Megan, how much you have done. You know, I always remind people that you serve eight municipalities, and that's generally not taken into account. You know, pandemics don't usually come into account when we think about the work you're doing, but it's been quite amazing. And I've heard from the mayors of the other municipalities how grateful they are for you and the work you've done. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'd like to say, it's not just me. You know, we have a whole team at the Health Department that is truly working round the clock to make sure that the work gets done, day and night, and during the weekends, too.
Great. Thank you so much, and stay well. So I'll just have a few remarks, as many of you, hopefully, you get my daily COVID-19 updates. We're going to be delivering this one live tonight, and this will also be available. We'll be pushing this out after tonight's meeting. I did just let everybody -- we are semi-virtual, but with me here in the room, obviously, you saw Megan Avalone, Chief Adalora is here, our Town Administrator Jim Gelday, whom you've seen, Tara Rolle, our town clerk, and Kim Ford, our Public Information Officer. And I do need to give a shout-out to Kim, all those public updates, although they have my name on it, she is penning the majority of that. And I do think, in times of crisis, there's no such thing as over-communication. So thanks to everybody. Tonight, we are taking public comment. If you do have any comments that you'd like to make during the meeting, you can send your comments to publiccomment@westfieldnj.gov, and we'll be reading this. But please be sure to include your name and address to have your email read publicly, and that will go into our public record. And this Facebook Live will also be replayed, obviously obvious on Facebook, but on our YouTube channel and TV36. So just an update. For COVID, as of today, there are 3,675 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in New Jersey. We have the second highest number -- New Jersey is the second highest number of cases in the country, behind New York. These include three additional cases in Westfield, two males, age 48 and 20, and one female, age 41. They're all managing symptoms at home. This brings the official count from the Board of Health, the 16 cases. I do want to recognize that there is a lag between testing and reporting, and as these drive-through test sites ramp up, the lag becomes even greater because the volume increases. So just know that. We're saying reporting 16, but we're certain that there are other confirmed cases out there that just haven't made its way through the reporting database. As I mentioned, just a huge shout-out to Megan for all the work that she's done. And to follow up on some of the comments that Jim said, just a few reminders for the public. The deadline to file federal and state income taxes has been extended to July 15th. And they've also -- the state has extended also the deadline for appealing property taxes from April 1st to May 1st. They also just announced -- I get questions, several a day, about what essential businesses and non-essential businesses. So the Governor's Office keeps clarifying what's essential. Today, they identified a couple more services as essential, like device shops and things that serve to repair mobile devices are considered essential. A lot of comments are coming related to people who work at home and now school learning at home. People need to have their devices repaired, so they are essential. Bicycle shops only open for service and repair. They're deemed essential, so people can travel. And also, nurseries and garden centers have been deemed essential as well, so they'll be open if people are going to be working in their yard, all requiring the social distancing measures that have been outlined. Other things you should know, the state has launched a jobs portal to help residents who have lost their jobs as a result of COVID-19. And you can find and apply for new job at essential workplaces at jobs.covid19新jersey.gov. Again, all of these resources will be available on our coronavirus portal on our website. State agencies have also sent a letter to all municipal water utilities, calling them to voluntarily suspend all water shut-offs during COVID-19. Private utility providers have already voluntarily suspended shut-offs, so nobody should be shut off from water during this crisis. The state has also applied for the available federal waiver to cancel all student standardized testing scheduled for April. We expect that waiver to be granted, and it won't impact graduation requirements of any student. The American Red Cross has made it known that there is a severe blood shortage due to an unprecedented number of blood-dried cancellations. So they are looking for eligible and healthy donors, and they're strongly urged to make an appointment. If anybody is feeling capable and willing to donate blood, it's needed desperately. Yesterday, we announced that the police department, there's a collection bid for unused N95 masks. We've talked -- hopefully, we made a note out, sent a note out to residents today on social media. Many people, when they buy masks, they come in packs of three. So if you've done any home renovation recently, painting, whatever, check your basements or garages to see if you might have an extra N95 mask or two hanging around that you're not even aware of. All of them are being donated to first responders and to the medical staff at Overlook Hospital. I've also gotten lots of questions about the Conservation Center. It is closed at this time, but we are working on a plan to allow it to reopen in a way that protects both our residents and our DPW employees. The DPW employees are working in staggered shifts for business continuity, but it also means that we have half the manpower at any given time. So it limits the operations of what we can do. They're still doing daily maintenance, things like potholes and tree plantings. And just last week, very importantly, they assisted the police department to transport and set up concrete barriers for the Union County coronavirus testing site that we just talked about at Kane. So as we work through the safest way to operate the Conservation Center, more details on that will be forthcoming. I do want to clarify once again, social distancing measures, and about the Governor's Stay-at-Home Order, which was initiated a couple days ago. Every day, I receive messages from concerned residents about groups of kids congregating around town, neighborhood gatherings, exercises, classes being held in the parks. The stay-at-home order is supposed to mean just that: stay at home. Walking in a park is fine, walking your dogs is fine, but it shouldn't be games of basketball. Singles tennis is fine, doubles is not, pickleball is not. Anything that revolves any types of proximity next to another person is not okay. So please stay at home as much as possible. The parks are open for now. We will -- hopefully, it won't get to a point where we have to consider closing them, especially as the weather continues to be nicer, but we need to make sure that the risks don't outweigh the benefits. And so we are always keeping that open as a possibility. Playgrounds and fields for organized play are closed. The Board of Ed's closed their recreational facilities, including Kaler, and so just be mindful of that. Also, the state Health Commissioner said 35% of the cases in New Jersey fall into the 30 to 49 age group. 24% of those folks that most people don't feel like will be seriously ill or fall ill are requiring hospitalization. So just remember, it takes two weeks for people to get to feel symptoms or signs of illness, so please stay at home as much as possible and flatten the curve. That also means, please avoid daily outings to the grocery store. It seems like people are going for, just on a daily trip to the grocery store, which is certainly not what the intention is. And so please avoid multiple trips to the grocery store, once or twice a week for essentials is fine, but please, anything more than that is really in violation of the stay-at-home order. Another thing that comes up, actually, a few other mayors have mentioned about it. I think in light of everybody using more Clorox wipes and others, they're flushing these wipes down the toilet, and it's actually creating tons of backup. Last week, we had, on scaled back crews, we already had three nights where DPW had to address six separate residential sanitary sewer backups. Costs us overtime, it costs us resources. So please, 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 don't put anything other than what's supposed to go in the toilet. These things should not go in the toilet, and it's causing us issues. And apparently, I hear these issues are statewide. Let's see. As I remembered, I think the best thing we could talk about is try to help each other going forward. As Jim mentioned, our virtual rec department is in full swing, so please follow them on social media, if you're not already. And of course, this is always -- so many other folks are doing great things. Our senior advisory council is reaching out to their lists to just check in with the seniors whose information that we have. And of course, the We Love Local Fund has raised close to $60,000 to assist our independently-owned businesses. There's also, we continue to hear about other community building nights. We've heard anything from, we've got our cheering nightly at 8 p.m. for medical professionals, chalk art or window displays by kids, food donation to our first responders. So please continue to share that information on social media, tag me, tag the town of Westfield, and we'll share all of that with the community as well. And we're also looking for our next porch performance. So if you have a special talent, if you know anyone that does, whether you are in a band that can play six feet apart, you're a classical musician, you're a juggler, I don't know what it is, but please let us know. I will come and film you from 10 feet away at your porch for the benefit of the community. And I just want to close by thanking clearly all the town employees who are really making sure that we're doing all the work of governing. I also wanted to, big shout-out to the Downtown Westfield Corporation. Nikki McCullough and Beth Brenner are working non-stop to make sure that our businesses are supported and promoted. And while we're all trying to do this virtually, it's not easy, and we're all, I think, doing pretty well in light of the challenging circumstances. But most importantly, I want to thank all of you to our Westfield community, our residents, our business owners, commercially property owners. We are very lucky to have a community that is so engaged, concerned, and willing to help. So I just want to end, it will get worse before it gets better. We know that from the experts. It's not meant to scare you, it's not meant to create panic, but it's all about how we balance our business at hand while we also try to scale and work with an unprecedented situation. So stay positive, check on your neighbors, and I know that what I've seen so far, that we are going to get through this as a community. We are doing very well, together, apart. And I did just get a funny note from people. That note I read from Bill Gates isn't actually written by Bill Gates, but the sentiment still applies, so please know that. So with that, are we good with this?
Keep recording. Facebook's going out.
Facebook's going out, but we're going to keep recording.
We'll show it on YouTube.
Got it. Okay. So, let's see. All right, so I'm -- got it? So, all right, sorry, I'm looking at the comments from the council members that are coming to me. So are they still -- they're still on, right?
I think so. Can everyone hear us?
Probably all are mute.
Yes.
Okay.
We're still here.
Got it.
We are here.
We know there's --
We can't hear too well, but we're here.
Got it. Okay, so.
Tara, we can hear you.
Do we have any advertised hearings?
Plus, the WebEx, the Facebook Live went down.
No, we know that. We're still recording.
If the mayor could move to where the town clerk is, that would be helpful for us.
What's that? Oh, God. Okay. All right. Can they hear you?
I'm a little closer to you, that's all.
She's reading the ordinance, right? Right, okay. So Tara's about to read the two advertised hearings.
The first is General Ordinance Number 2160, an ordinance amending the code of the town of Westfield, New Jersey, in order to require notification to the Downtown Westfield Corporation of building permit and development applications. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2160, please email your comment now to publiccomment@westfieldnj.gov. Be sure to include your name and address for the record. Again, these are comments specific to General Ordinance Number 2160. Again, these are comments specific to General Ordinance Number 2160. Seeing no one, mayor may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
The second is General Ordinance Number 2168, an ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the town of Westfield, New Jersey, in order to establish the Human Relations Advisory Commission for the town of Westfield. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2168, please email your comments now to publiccomment@westfieldnj.gov and include your name and address for the record. Again, these are comments specific to General Ordinance Number 2168. Seeing no one, mayor may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed. Councilwoman Mackey, please move for the adoption of ordinances.
Thank you, mayor. I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2160 on second reading, an ordinance amending the code of the town of Westfield, New Jersey, in order to require notification to the Downtown Westfield Corporation of building permit and development applications.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
When you say second, please say your name.
Mike Dartia.
Councilman Dartia, thank you. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dartia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. This motion is carried.
I would also like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2168 on second reading, an ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the town of Westfield, New Jersey, in order to establish the Human Relations Advisory Commission for the town of Westfield.
May I have a second?
Seconded by Linda Hapgood.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dartia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. This motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Town Council Conference Session and Regular Meeting of March 10, 2020?
Moved by Councilman LaGrippo.
Second?
Second, Mike Dartia.
Councilman Dartia. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Do we have any petitions or communications?
No, mayor.
Now it's time for open discussion by citizens. Please email your comment to publiccomment@westfieldnj.gov on any subject on which the council has jurisdiction, and be sure to include your name and address for the record.
Mayor, this is Tom Jardine. While we're waiting for that, I think it would be important to bring back the Facebook Live feed, particularly for the public portion.
We're trying.
Do you want to proceed to the rest?
Yeah, so you know what? We're going to proceed to the rest of the agenda while these guys are working on the Facebook Live. So Councilwoman Hapgood, can you move the bills and claims?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I'd like to move bills and claims in the amount of $202,918.53.
May I have a second?
Seconded by Councilman.
Seconded by whom?
LaGrippo.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
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 You can't put it down there.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Next on the agenda is reports of standing committees, beginning with Finance Policy Committee. Councilwoman Hapgood?
Thank you, mayor. I have four resolutions, three of which I'd like to move as a package. A resolution authorizing the CFO to refund Recreation Department fees, a resolution authorizing the CFO to refund unused parking permit fees, and a resolution to appoint the tax assessor.
May I have a second?
Seconded by Scott Katz.
Councilman Scott, seconded by Councilman Scott Katz. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 Opposed? This motion is carried.
And I'd also like to move a resolution to approve budget transfers.
May I have a second?
Seconded, Boyes.
Seconded by Councilman Boyes. Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dartia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. This motion is carried. Next is the Code Review and Town Property Committee. Councilwoman Mackey?
Thank you, mayor. I would like to move General Ordinance Number 2169 on first reading, an ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the town of Westfield regarding road openings and street paving.
May I have a second?
Seconded by Linda Hapgood.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dartia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. This motion is carried. Last is the Public Works Committee. Councilman Contract?
I would like to move a resolution authorizing an award of contract for professional engineering services.
May I have a second?
Second, Mike Dartia.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 Aye.
Opposed? This motion is carried, and the reports from department heads are accepted. Well, we're back, and with apologies for the glitches, we're having some issues with our connectivity for some reason, but we do have to redo the advertised hearings to make sure that we're in full compliance with the ability of public comment. So with that, we're just going to go back, and I'm going to ask the clerk to move forward with the two advertised hearings.
Okay. The first advertised hearing is General Ordinance Number 2160, an ordinance amending the code of the town of Westfield, New Jersey, in order to require notification to the Downtown Westfield Corporation of building permit and development applications. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2160, please email your comment now to publiccomment@westfieldnj.gov. Include your name and address for the record. And again, these are comments specific to General Ordinance Number 2160. Seeing no one, mayor may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
And the second is General Ordinance Number 2168, an ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the town of Westfield, New Jersey, in order to establish the Human Relations Advisory Commission for the town of Westfield. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2168, please email your comment now to publiccomment@westfieldnj.gov and include your name and address for the record. Again, these are comments for General Ordinance Number 2168. Seeing no one, mayor may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed. So Councilwoman Mackey, please move for the adoption of these ordinances.
Thank you, mayor. I would like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2160 on second reading, an ordinance amending the code of the town of Westfield, New Jersey, in order to require notification to the Downtown Westfield Corporation of building permit and development applications.
May I have a second?
Seconded, Katz.
Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dartia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. The motion is carried.
I would also like to move for the adoption of General Ordinance Number 2168 on second reading, an ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the town of Westfield, New Jersey, in order to establish the Human Relations Advisory Commission for the town of Westfield.
May I have a second?
Seconded, LaGrippo.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dartia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. This motion is carried. So now it's time for open discussion by citizens. As we've said, you can email your comments to publiccomment@westfieldnj.gov on any subject on which we have jurisdiction, and please be sure to include your name and address for the record. We cannot accept any comments without name and address. So we'll just give it a minute or so to see if any comments come through. Oh, the one comment? There was no name and address. But I think it was what, someone had a question about the closing.
Who was recommending the parks be closed?
Yeah, someone had recommended the parks be closed, and as I mentioned it earlier in my comments, that we're definitely leaving that as an option that's open to us if we feel that people continuously not adhere to the social distance requirements. Again, please, please, please do so. We don't want to be in a position where we have to do that, but if necessary, we will. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move. Councilman Contract.
A second?
Seconded, Dartia.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Opposed?
Did we not have to move General Ordinance 2169?
No, we did not. That was on first reading. So, okay, so with apologies for the technical glitches tonight, we'll have it more together in the next few weeks at the next council meeting. And so, but thank you. I guess, you know, we're all in uncharted waters here, so we appreciate your patience and tuning in. So this, our motion is carried, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.